Continuation of public period.
Yeah.
Was two and three Sunday Woods.
That's two and three Sunday Woods. Who's here to talk about two and three Sunday Woods?
The same guy.
If I remember correctly...
Is it continuation?
Yes, I know it's a continuation. We're talking about, you were gonna come back with revised plans on lot two, right? The house, the house that the driveway wraps around.
That's correct.
Okay, so that, we're looking at lot, basically a lot two tonight?
Lot two and lot three.
What are we looking at for lot two?
Lot three, we were down to the lighting, the sort of fill.
Yeah, in the basement, the floor, the ceiling of the basement?
Well, the total height of the house is almost about that.
Alright. So you're gonna cut down the size of the one on one two?
Yeah, so basically what happened is, so this is the updated plan set. Last time we basically showed you just this sketch inside the, the footprint of the house. So since then, the house has been reduced, which I'll let, I'll let Peter expand on that. We've also reduced the vine or fill on the, on the project site and the height. We've reduced a few tru-, you know, basically the tree cutting and Karen's also added some additional planting for it. So it's a, it's a much better layout than what we had originally. So what we had was basically, we went from basically a, basically a forty-five degree garage, four car garage, and now we've gone down to a three car garage. So the footprint as well, I'll let Peter talk about the actual RGFH change. But our biggest issue for engineering is both the height and for the actual volume. So we're now down to just below fifteen thousand yards cubic yards of fill for the project site, which is about a, about a hundred yards less than what that conceptual one we did for the, when we were doing the whole planning board set for this. But it's also about seven hundred yards less than what you saw at the actual sidewalk. So we've reduced everything significantly. We placed a retaining wall along the front, so this way this, this grade doesn't push all the way out to the street like we were talking about at the project site. So now it's just along this area, and now this is all just existing grade that's already there. We've cut all this back, and this is all the natural swell through there, so we're saving some additional trees down in that area. So we brought everything in, dropped everything, brought in all that kind of stuff. We dropped the house itself at the walkouts, so we could reduce the, the grading at the walkout by three inches. And then they took six inches off the roof, so basically the entire mass, you know, the roof ridge dropped basically nine inches. So we're, we're almost a foot below the maximal allowable, where before we were just, just, just under two inches below the maximal allowable. So, so significant differences to the actual project. The drainage has changed slightly because of that, but we're still doing all our reductions that we were doing like before, which is we're in the ballpark of ten to fifteen percent, twenty percent reductions on all the butters. We're reducing the runoff to that, to the existing catch basin system that's for the, for the, for the actual recharge basin for the, for the common driveway section through there. That's basically the, that kind of covers what we did for the original, for the engineering. I'm basically asking what Peter go through the RGFH and the height stuff more, and Karen go through the, the change in the landscape.
What was the square footage of, of personal removal or movement?
Yeah, so yeah, so the volume counts, yeah.
Yeah.
So original stuff that got submitted was, uh, there was about twenty-two thousand cubic, that's a net, net fill. And then we've reduced it now down to fourteen eighty-six. Yeah, fourteen eighty-six. So basically the reason why, part of the reason why we used that number was for the actual original subdivision, there was a conceptual grading layout for this lot and for the, or actually for all three lots. And they basically all had ballpark numbers of about fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred yards for each individual lot. And so that's why we wanted to try to get down, down below that number so we can meet it. It was, it was fifteen seventy-one, so we're at fourteen eighty-six right now.
So one thousand four hundred eighty-six.
Yeah.
You were saying like fourteen thousand and fifteen thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you approve that, that's great. Yeah, yeah, I guess, apparently it's getting late. Yeah, so that's, yeah, we had twenty-two, twenty-two hundred at the sidewalk, and yeah, so it's about fourteen hundred now.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, and then, and then we had about, basically the nineties drop in the height.
I'm looking at ten, eight, thousand yards up there.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving right along, taking a look at, what's this?
And how are you for the rest of the day?
Uh, Peter Sandors, the architect. This is a rendering of the house as proposed. It comes to a flat, so we actually dropped the whole flat section of the roof six inches. Originally, the garage was four bays and it was on a tilt, which increased this whole mudroom area. Took off a whole bay of the garage, all the space upstairs. Took off the whole slice of pie, if you will, where it was bent, brought that all in. That saved us almost a thousand square feet of space to get us down under the allowable number.
So originally, as you can probably, the concept plans had seventy-five hundred square meters, so a thousand and I'm over the shooting for to get around.
Yeah.
Right.
But the elevation doesn't look like a rendering. Is that, is that, is that because the rendering was a bit earlier?
No, no, this is no.
The flat roof section looks wider than the elevation.
It does, it does.
Is that, I think that's, that's just artistic license.
Yeah, I think just on the sketch.
Well, it looks like a steeper slope of the roof.
But, but...
Yeah, that's what it is. The, this roof slope is shallower in the, in the...
In the rendering.
Really, it's a better looking house.
It is, it is.
Well, that looks more homely, the other one looks more like...
French.
Right.
I was going to say French.
I mean, does it matter?
If, if the roof pitch was less?
No.
Why not make it less? You know, it won't look so much like a man's.
It's more roof area.
Right. Let's just look at the section first. And even, but now this is telling me. And that's cut front to back, so that's different. But if it's a ten twelve, I mean, we could take it down to a nine twelve, or even an eight twelve.
I mean, just do what the guy that did the rendering, what's the rendering?
You know Matt, what you...
The night.
The night? The night.
It is, okay.
So we, we have a maximal allowable elevation of one ninety-five. We've got the ridge at one ninety-four, and might even cut lower as we drop the, the pitch. And then we will drop the wings as well. Here we're dropping three and a half feet, here we're dropping four and a half feet approximately. Just that we did a roof plan, just to show you all how it was coming together. Again, talking about some square footage. Study section, new building. Ceiling height's nine eight.
Is the color of the rendering accurate? Is that what you're planning to, to have as the color of the house?
Yeah, I'm Paul Kajian, I'm the building developer. And, and I, we believe we want to go with that type of a beige color is, is the, is the expectation.
It would be, I mean, my personal preference would be to try to mute the color as much as possible because, you know, I think it wants to, it doesn't want to jump out at you from, from...
The goal is to mute it. So if, if the first house coming in is a, it's like a red shingles, the last house is sort of a gray shingles. So this would be sort of a muted beige type shingles, I think is what we were thinking.
Well, could we sign off on the, on the stain color?
Absolutely, we can, we can actually make it as part of the thing, I, I, we can actually bring in the shingles that we expect to use.
Yeah.
And, and have you sign off on those colors. Got the different...
I think too, the rendering came in today from, from Boston, and it, it purpled out a bit in the roof, so I think it's a little galling.
We're gonna use a fieldstone type.
Yeah, we're looking more towards a ten.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, what's, this is awful yellow.
Yeah, it's not gonna be yellow, it's more of a tan, muted tan type thing. But we can, we can make that part of the, you know, really naturally to the beginning.
Sure. You know, it'll, I think it'll, it'll do better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed. Any changes in the lighting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Whoa, speaking of...
Any changes in the lighting?
You get it.
Wow.
Oh, it's midnight. It's midnight.
Oh, that's it, gotta go home.
That's absolutely, that's...
Yeah, it's midnight.
I'm sure we can turn it back on.
Oh, do we count that?
They're on time.
I've turned them on before, they're on.
Only, only these, yeah, these are the ones that are actually lit. So this is a good incentive to hurry up. Campbell light.
So, um, the landscape, um...
Wait, tell the trail for us to get the first, I'm gonna, wait, tell where the trail is.
Oh, there isn't one. Uh, the trail isn't on this one, the trail is on the next one.
The next one down.
So the lot one over here, lot two, lot three, um, you need my name right, Karen Sebastian.
Karen what?
Sebastian, sorry. The, the common drive goes by, here's our new driveway here. Basically, with the regrading, we got to save some more trees over in this area, which we saw on the sidewalk and wanted to try and save. And then increased the, the screen lawn here for this house. There's a few more trees here that block the pool, we were worried about that at the lot, so I expanded this stretch of trees here. And then over in this spot here on the septic that we had talked about, that we were gonna have that ground cover that was the no move rasp, we put in actual ground covers because we talked about blueberries, but...
Yeah, we did.
I had an issue with growing blueberries on the septic. I don't know, it just...
Back and forth, it's like gray water.
I don't know, you know, so, um, this is, this is, um...
The birds eat them anyway.
Yeah, this is a bare strawberry, which is an ice ground cover that grows in sun and shade, and it will spread quickly, and then behind it is some ferns. So the lawn is, is surrounding the house, and as you drive along here, it's still similar. There's some deciduous trees, red maples, which are gonna grow there with the, um, kind of near the, the dam. And then there's some magnolia virginia for some screening, but also some flowers. So basically, increase the screening, make sure this is a ground cover that's not gonna get mowed, and save more trees on, so that's the green. Now the lighting, all the fixtures are dark sky.
What, you found them?
I did, it was hard work.
But now you know.
But now I know, and...
And now you're a believer in it.
Well, I wasn't, I was a believer before, but the, the fixtures, how you choose, they had discontinued. So we're at twenty thousand nine hundred and eighty, which is below the twenty-two. And there's, the wall sponses here. This, under the light center, gonna be over the garage, path lighting. This is one post light at the end of the driveway. This is down light center over the side door. Step lights, and the pool light. And the pool light is the...
We have to have those post light at the end of the driveway? Can we, 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 we were talking about lot three before. We were talking about something that just lighted the driveway, not a post lamp up in the, up in the air, but something lower. I mean, cause this is all, this is sort of the, it's sort of in the woods, you know?
Right, this light, so this light is, is only, it's right here.
Yeah, it's a post lamp.
So it lights the driveway into the house?
Yeah, I mean, again, a lot three.
So you're coming down this, undertaking the...
Are you just keeping the post lamp a lot three?
Yes.
Oh.
Well, one of the things that we noticed on the, on the sidewalk was that you're in the woods there, and the snow is staying longer, and with all the snow we had this year, you said about a ballard light.
Yeah.
It's gonna, what if it gets covered in snow, and they're not able to see? In, especially on lot...
Ballards are light this high.
Especially on lot three, though, they have that crossing, so...
Yeah, I think with, one was removed, right?
Yeah, I decreased the number of post lights. Um, I don't know, Paul, do you want a post light at the end of this driveway?
Uh, yeah, I'm glad to blow it. If, if it's a big issue, we do.
I think it's wrong, I really do.
Yeah, you wanna keep it more...
Yeah, low level, low light level, nothing up in the air. It's right in the middle of the forest, it's in the middle of Sunday Woods. It was, it, it just doesn't want to look like a subdivision house at Needham. You know, I mean, it wants to keep being keeping with this, with the surroundings.
Yeah, we can move that back, or we just, we can put a low light there, just to mark some, uh...
Yeah.
Demarcation of where the entrance is.
Right.
Yeah.
That, that would be great, I appreciate that.
Is that a wrong light? There'd be a similar dark sky light, but we'll just put a, a knee high.
Yeah, you can do that, that's, that's... That's like a low voltage path light that will get knocked out by anything, so...
Yeah, that's too low. We're talking about something about this side.
Okay.
Don't they, and some things, who, who need posts, and that these things are embedded inside of the posts, cause they all... They all just, you know, shoot straight down.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And they're high enough that it shouldn't get too badly.
And it marks the entrance.
And it gives you, it gives you what you want, something that says...
I just want something to light the driveway up. This is where the driveway is, because as you said, you're coming in through the woods, and it's dark out there.
But likewise, they all have headlights on their cars.
That's right, I guess this is a miraculous invention, cars have headlights.
So yeah, just, just the down, so... Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Sorry?
That's okay.
I know we're all getting irritable.
I don't, I'm not irritable.
The screen planting at the end of the house, that far end, what size?
This, which far end?
The right-hand side, facing the, facing counter road. Or what, what is this, what are the sizes?
So they're all, they're twelve to fourteens, they're, they're twelve to fourteens, and there's some ten to twelve, I think, that are mixed in here. And if you remember, there's a lot of large trees out there. There's also understory planting that are, shrubs that are gonna get large. So we're trying to fit them in between these trees that we're saving too.
Yeah.
With trees on the other side of the, the street that faces the nearest home.
These ones.
Yeah.
I know they're not here, but it gives you any comfort level. We were pretty transparent, we knocked on that door and showed them the plans, and they seemed happy.
Yeah.
They wrote a level of support for lot three.
Yeah. Kim and Dave, any comments at all? No, looks alright.
Okay, we just got the smaller, from my perspective.
Good, moving on to lot three. Two to thirty-four.
So, uh, last time at the hearing, you basically gave us three tasks. It was, like you mentioned, height, volume, and lights. So we went back and took a look at the grading for the site, and we dropped it down two hundred twenty-five yards. We're at the fourteen seventy-five, we were up at seventeen hundred. From the sidewalk to last hearing, we dropped it a hundred, which dropped it all to two twenty-five. So now, we're below, it was a fifteen ten, what was originally approved for the concept, so we significantly reduced it down, we're below that number. The, uh, the house has been reduced for height, so I'll let Peter kind of go through that with it, with his cross sections. But we tried to look at with the grading, kind of see what we can do, try to bring the height down, we talked about with the mast. And then Karen went and did the, the new landing all over again, to get the dark sky stuff. I know we... And we would talk about what's going on for the, for the crossing through there, but basically everything's, all the lighting is, is dark sky. So we just wanna go through it.
Okay.
So after the last meeting, we, at least I took from your comments that we wanted to come further below the maximal allowable, which is one ninety-two, we went back at the roof actually completely in the main section, and dropped the roof ten inches from the maximal allowable. I think before we were only four, I forget, we were much closer. We were able to do that by reducing the, the knee walls on either side. We were able, in a positive way, to give this house a ten pitch, which was an eight pitch. It actually looks much better now than it did, because, because of the way we held the, the knee walls down.
Yeah, the proportions do look better.
Yeah, it's come a long way, so I think, I think it was a positive thing. So, so coming from the one ninety-two, the main ridge is at one ninety-one point two, and then the other ridges dropped, this ridge drops six feet, this ridge, ridge drops five feet, this ridge, ridge drops three feet seven inches, and this ridge is four feet seven inches down.
A lot better.
So everything's kind of come down proportionally, as you said, in the back as well, cause it carries through. This is the rendering of that house, which has been redone as well, to reflect that, the height changes. We also did a, uh, a roof plan, just talking about, and, and getting rid of all the crazy bastard pitches, we got all that out of it, so now it's all consistent, which makes it better in my world, I think, in our world. To build, percentage wise, the center ridge, which is the main ridge that you see, represents only about twenty-five percent of the total pitches of the house in terms of cutting up to the, to the ten inch area.
What's the back elevation look like?
Uh, guys, have it roll there. Let's, let's grab it. May I be, sir? Did the house itself look smaller than the other house, or is it... This house was actually always under in terms of the allowable square footage.
Oh, it wasn't, it wasn't. From the sidewalk, we dropped it a few more square feet. So yeah, the last meeting was below seven...
Right. So this is, is the back elevation now, again bringing the, the knee walls down?
Still a monster in the back.
Yeah, remember that, there's, there's a wall that's actually runs across here, so you don't see this, almost this entire section.
What's that wall made of?
It's a fieldstone wall.
Didn't you reduce the height of the basement where you were going to, or...
Well, what we did is we, we looked at, we took that as basically the, the ten inch drop, was basically to us was trying to bring the entire house to a point of ten inches. So what we did, we used, we dropped the entire building, and we actually took the ridge down. I also, to get the volume out, I dropped the garage an additional four inches to get more volume out of that driveway. So we didn't, we didn't technically take out the height of the, of the basement, but we took the house down and the ridge down.
Right now, we have less fill in the concept than a couple hundred gallons of...
Yeah, I think it's as much as we can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we figured that that was more than a ten, we'll just try to get, I mean, now, we figured we were able, we solved it that way.
What about the retaining walls of the front, are they still here?
Yes.
Okay. Even with a reduced fill?
They're less, it's that we reduced, uh, we took out steps, so it's, the steps are smaller, they're much smaller, but they're still there. Cause there's, maybe you remember, there was, there was that five foot gradient, so even though we reduced the fill, we still need to make that transition.
Yeah.
And this still has a four car garage?
Yes.
Okay, so the lighting, landscaping?
So the landscaping, um, I think... The landscape didn't really change from the last time, and everyone was pretty happy with that, with all the extra screening that we had put in down here that, to, to screen that side. And the lighting is all dark sky, um, fixtures. So there's, um, sponses next to all the exit doors. There's one down pendant light that hangs over the front door, um, step lighting's again. There's larger sponses up front, and then there's post lamps. There were, we had four post lamps before along the road, and it's reduced to three.
You just had the post lamp discussion?
Actually, we reduced it to a ball. I know, I'm showing you what I did, so you can comment on it, like, it's our project, or like, it's a different one! It's a different house!
The only, the only thing I'd point out about that is, you know, I know the last thing, last time we were asked to get this type of lighting, we did do that, but I think this is very different than lot two. We have a hundred foot driveway, we have four children in the home, I mean, they need to play. We have, we cross over water, our driveway sits up high and drops off. We just don't want opportunities for people to be riding bikes over hills and not be able to see, so...
Don't be able to see. This is, this is dark sky to plan anyway, so it's only lighting the driveway. So the only point of it is to keep, have something up in the air. It's not like a typical post lamp, where you see the, the lamp itself. This is, this is just aiming the light down on the driveway. So it doesn't matter how high the light is, as long as the light is lighting the driveway, as long as it performs the same lighting function.
I just, I, you know, I just think it's a different, yeah, they are walking down...
We're not saying no light, we're just saying it's different.
It's a hundred feet of driveway, I mean, wait.
No, no, it's, we're not saying you can't have a light, we're saying...
And it's now, and it's dangerous, I think it's a safety issue.
Why? It's the same light.
Well, wait a minute, I mean, these are kids, are they out in, at night in the dark fighting?
Well, where it, at a certain age, it will be, I...
It's the same light on the driveway.
We're at the end of the color set.
No, what you're talking about is if you want that whole thing lit with spotlights, and...
No, we just want some low level lighting.
Well, there you go, that's what we got. We've got low level lighting.
It's the same light on the driveway, it's just that you don't have a post up high.
Just lowered toward, to the ground, that's all, it's still lighting.
It's the same light, in terms of safety, it's exactly the same thing. Six of one and a half dozen of the other.
Why don't you show us where the... We have both, I have both, and I have a long driveway before, and we had it, we had some post lamps.
We have a really, really, really long driveway like you do.
And then I had the long ones on the cape, and we knocked them all over with the plows, and... This is a difficult plowing situation, and that's a difficult situation.
Okay, now we're off the bicycles, we're walking the snowbound.
So, so just, just so you can see where the post lights are, there's, this is the crossing, so there'd be one here and one here. And then there was gonna be one up in, in this area, but there are also low lights in the walls, so we could drop that post. But I think along here is where Scott's concerned, because there's that crossing.
So they'll be bollards instead.
It's not about the light, we're not reducing the light.
I, I was just showing you where they were on the plan, cause someone asked me to show you where they were on the plan.
How high the light is, it's the same light.
You'd like a three and a half? I'd like to have a regular post light, and this is, and this is the reason.
Five feet, six feet?
Yes.
It's six feet high?
It goes beyond just that we have a long, narrow driveway with some challenges. We're not, we're not interrupting the look as you approach that home. Where these lights are down on curved driveway, you can't even see them, we're the only ones that are gonna see them.
No, but you're not the only ones that are gonna see them.
Light is pretty...
We're at the end, the end of the road surrounded by woods.
But it, that's the problem, it is surrounded by woods, and there are trails, and we're trying to, we're really trying hard to preserve the look of Sunday Woods as the name of the roads.
I am totally with you on that. I came back here with fifty more trees, I blocked the entire thing.
Why don't we continue the new...
Oh, please, I mean, we're all just getting irritable now.
And I just want to point out, the trails are on the back of the house. They're trails, you'll not see the lights as you approach with the driveway.
If you're saying six foot light, would we accept something like a four foot light, three foot light?
Yeah, I think we talked about it.
We were talking like about a bollard, if it likes four foot, right? We were talking like a four foot light.
Four foot, how four foot light?
Four foot bollard with the down...
What about, is it gonna be below the, the...
Four foot light.
It's just a visual cue, right, the drive?
Yeah.
And it's just a visual cue, what?
Getting late, I'm turning into a pumpkin.
That's what I have to do, I don't, I really don't, I mean, I don't...
I don't, I don't think it's that much of a...
I think it'll give you all the safety you need. It's high enough that the slow is not gonna get that high, hopefully. But you're gonna...
Your plow truck's, you're gonna be real careful.
You know, and I do think it makes sense to mark at least the crossing, you know?
Yeah.
But that makes sense.
We're not talking eighteen inch lights, we're talking four feet versus six feet, that's all.
We use the same kind of post light, but we, we have to be four feet high.
Well, not the same kind of...
No, it's not the same kind.
It's a different kind of fixture.
I think where it wants to be is more like, if it's a bollard, it's gonna, it's gonna have a light that... And we'll look up a fixture, but it's gonna have some kind of a light that's like this, that shines down, so that it's not above your head, so that you don't get that glare from the woods. So this would be dark sky, but it's more focused, and it's, that's just a sketch.
Puts black grig on the road, Brady, why?
So it's kind of, you know, this... The way this light works on the wall, it's like that, only with the posting, it's a little bit bigger.
It's a bigger fixture.
Like bigger spread, so it's like a wider spread, so that it's, it's gonna wash the...
All over town.
And you would see, you would see, you would see this as you're driving, or...
High.
Okay. So Ray, still put high bollards.
Here we go.
Same as last.
So, we're gonna review the draft decision on this on what date?
New town planner, starting work next Wednesday. You can't even see anything over there, it's dark.
Can our consultants vote?
Yeah. You guys can take off.
Are you happy?
Yeah.
I would call her happy.
I'd be. They care, it's forever.
It's too late, I have to say done.
I guess it's gonna be, are you happy with every board?
No, it never is.
And PM?
This is for us to review, right?
Yeah. This is for us to review. Somebody has to write the decision.
We just have to write the decision.
Best problem is you're gonna.
So, can you write it by the fourth, do you think? Why not?
Sure.
Okay. Ten o'clock on the fourth.
So, the decision will be written kind of like?
We'll review it. You don't have to comment.
We don't have to comment, you can pick it up, okay?
Yeah. There's no recitation.
There's no chance of getting another one.
It's not on the agenda, and we already just booked something else. So, June fourth.
No. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna continue it. Betsy likes the idea of continuing making it.